All to order, the March 31st, 2019 special meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone, every single last one of you here this morning and request that you, our audience, please silence your cellphones and electronic devices and keep your tray tables stowed in the locked condition until this plane is safely landed. All right, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
All right, as we get started here, we had one item that was left off the agenda, a presentation, and so we'd like to add that to the agenda, and do I have a motion to do so?
Mr. Chair, I motion that we add that to the agenda, if you will, under announcements, maybe, so it's not such an abrupt change to the agenda.
Great.
I second the motion.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The announcement that we have today is an opportunity for the Mount Washington Community Council President to read a letter from their council to the board to keep us up to speed. Oh, do we need to do a roll call? Oh, sorry. Treasurer Wagner.
Treasurer keeps us straight.
Please call the roll.
Thank you, I didn't want to interrupt you, I was gonna wait until you were done with your sentence. Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Bowers.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Messer.
Present.
Mr. Morosky. And President Jones.
Now we're ready for our announcement.
But we're not going to discuss it.
Very good. So if we could have our president of the Mount Washington Community Council come forward and read a letter from their council to our board members and our audience.
Good morning. My name is Alyssa Pope, and I'm the president of the Mount Washington Community Council. I'm here with Michael Survey, who's also a board member of the community council. We had, we learned of Mercy Hospital's abrupt closing of our school, health clinic at Mount Washington Elementary, and at Silverton Elementary as well, and we decided to take action by writing a letter to you all, Laurie, you're gonna get yours by mail, and emailing City Council, the mayor, Mercy, because the clinic is, is used to capacity in our community. It was closed abruptly with no plans, either through Interact for Health, Francie Wolgan, or with any of the stakeholders in our community, which would have easily been done, we were great partners to work with. So we would just like this letter, you all to read, hear the letter, but also for it to go in on public record. Thank you for listening. Michael, who was the key author in the letter, is gonna read it.
Thanks to the board. Dear Mayor Karanley, at the general membership meeting of the Mount Washington Community Council on April 17th, 2019, there was discussion regarding the planned closing of the health clinic at Mount Washington Elementary School by Mercy Health Systems. The entire membership that was in attendance was completely shocked from this information. At the subsequent meeting on May 15th, 2019, the membership voted to send this letter to you, City Council, and others to state the objections, to state our objections to this action by Mercy Health Systems in the strongest terms possible. As of May 15th, since the beginning of the 2018-19 school year, the nurse practitioner located at this clinic has seen 1,019 patients, including students, staff members, and members of the broader Mount Washington community. Each of these visits provide revenue to Mercy Health System of up to $160 for a wellness visit, and up to $120 for a more general office visit. Vaccines are free. More importantly, the demand for these services has been increasing. At the beginning of the school year, the nurse practitioner saw an average of six patients per day, and this has increased over the course of the school year to between eight and nine patients per day currently. Services are provided five days a week throughout the school year, except when Cincinnati Public Schools are on break. The school itself provides free space for the clinic, phone and internet access, janitorial services, as well as a school health assistant to determine the priority for services by the nurse practitioner. It was also stated that Mercy Health will be closing a similar health clinic at Silverton Elementary School, also a CPS facility, and would be opening new school-based health clinics in Batavia School District and the Claremont Northeast School District. As such, it appears that this is the result of the recent Mercy Health merger with another health system. I do not need to remind you that early in your administration, your office supported approval by City Council of a number of tax breaks for the benefit of Mercy Health to construct its new headquarter facility in the city. These incentive include, incentives include a property investment reimbursement agreement approved in June of 2014 and valued at $18,605,861. Six weeks later, in August 2014, you supported an ordinance that rolled back some of the clawback provisions contained in that PRI agreement, should Mercy Health not comply with the terms and conditions of the agreement. Furthermore, in November 2004, you and City Council approved a 30-year tax abatement for Mercy Health valued at an additional $17,890,146. Finally, in December 2016, Mercy Health received a job creation tax credit for an additional employment that the project is expected to create, valued at $1,550,000. These actions provide subsidy to Mercy Health totaling $38,046,007. How has Mercy Health repaid the city's generosity? It closed two medical centers in Westwood and Mount Airy so it could open a new facility in Green Township. Now, to add insult to injury, Mercy Health is closing heavily-used health centers in a CPS school in Mount Washington, as well as another CPS facility. Why? So it can open school-based health centers in suburban areas. We have reviewed the agreements that the city executed with Mercy Health. Unfortunately, they are totally focused on the headquarters facility. However, in light of the tens of millions of dollars that the city has approved for Mercy Health, clearly the cost of these health clinics pales in comparison. At a minimum, Mercy Health is behaving as a horrible corporate citizen. At worst, Mercy Health has made a business decision to turn its back on the city that has performed as superb economic development partner. Mercy Health is ruthlessly pursuing its mere corporate interests. Inside the new Mercy Anderson Hospital, there is a plaque with the mission statement of Mercy Health that states, Mercy Health extends the healing ministry of Jesus by improving the health of our communities with emphasis on people who are poor and underserved. Mercy Health is falling way short of this mission statement. Catherine McCauley, the founder of the Sisters of Mercy, would not recognize the mercenary behavior of the corporation that now bears its name. Any assistance that you may be able to lend in convincing Mercy Health to reverse its pending decision would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Alyssa Pope, President. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us today, and thank you for the work in your community on behalf of all their students, or our students there in Mount Washington. Okay, the purpose of today's meeting is to have a follow-up discussion on our tax abatement process, the negotiation process with the city, how we will function and operate here within Cincinnati Public Schools to ensure that we have the resources adequate to, to approach the work that's ahead between now and the end of the year, or at the time we can reach the agreement. So, I'd like to open it up for discussion. I know there are a variety of topics related to this that, that may come up, but I'd like to go and open that up to get the conversation started. Mr. Davis?
Well, I have a question, kinda like I don't have to move to talk. Can we get an update on how Lee was meeting with, with Luke Blocher before we go forward with our conversation?
I think that'd be a great place to start. Mr. Hoynes?
Mr. Chair, it'd be good to, while the administration is up, we can, maybe that's when we can ask some of the other questions we might have before we start the, the discussion. You have a few questions, thank you.
Good morning. So, we have set up a meeting with city administration, it's scheduled for June 6th, 2019, from CPS. The Treasurer and I will be there, as well as Mike Sobel, our consultant, will be participating by phone. The city, Paula Boggs-Muthing, Luke Blocher, Billy Weber, and Caitlin Geiger from the Law Department, Karen Alder, and Sam Stevens from Finance will be participating. So that's, that's scheduled for June 6th. June 5th, is that right? June 5th.
June 5th.
6th.
6th of Thursday.
As I said, June 6th is when.
Thank you.
Good start.
Good, 31 days, I think, in May, yeah. Okay, good. And have they formally communicated that that is their official negotiating team? And then the follow-up to that then is, if that is the case, then have they communicated the official approval process through the city?
Yeah, so, per your request, we asked the city what their approval process will be. The response we received, and this is quoting Luke Blocher, administration will present a proposed agreement to council, and then the city manager will ultimately have to approve and execute the agreement.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. In terms of process, if that's the negotiations team, and that might be part of our negotiations team that you mentioned, the Treasurer, Mr. Sobel, and yourself, procedurally, I'm thinking back to the FC experience, and one of the things that we did was be, and we have been so far, very public about what our interests are, and how we wanted it to be settled, or what we needed. And I'm hoping that during this discussion today, we can get some of those parameters as well. I'm not interested in necessarily telling the community at this time that there's going to be a lot of closed-door negotiations. That is sort of the way the city conducts itself, and it has not necessarily been the way that we've conducted ourselves. And I think that was a good comparison as we went through the FC experience. We know that the board will set the parameters for the negotiations. I'm wondering if we have any insight as to, you mentioned the city manager has to execute the agreement, is it City Council that will also be establishing the framework? Because the letter that we got from the manager said a number of different things in the same paragraphs. So, do we know, is, the ultimate responsibility falls to the City Council to agree to this? This is not something that is given to the administration, I would assume. Is that true? Do we know that about the city?
So you asked that I attend the City Council Budget and Finance Committee meeting on May 20th, which I did. It certainly felt like City Council members were starting to communicate some direction and parameters to the negotiation team, so certainly they're involved. But again, you know, what I have from the city is that, you know, it'll be presented to council, but ultimately approved and executed by the city manager. And that's really as much as I know about what their process will be.
Okay. I might ask you, are there some specific questions we can ask today of the administration? I'm, I'm interested in several things, but I know that in our previous experience on this topic, because we've been working on this topic actually for three years, people may or may not know that, whether it was with the preschool promise levy, and having the Ernst &amp; Young subsidiary folks determine it, or whether it's, this was the opening bell, was the FC experience of us talking about this abatement. So we've been on this, in committee and in, in full board. Do we know how much Ernst &amp; Young subsidiary told us we were not being made whole when they published their report?
If memory serves me correctly, I don't have that data in front of me, it seems to me that $6 million was the annual shortage that they came up with, but I'd have to pull that file just to confirm.
And if I could, then that, that was speaking in terms of the pilot, or it was speaking in terms of the whole package, or?
I don't recall what, how much, I mean, they spent 12 weeks with me, and they went into everything, so I don't remember if they, if that calculation took into consideration the state foundation formula or not. I just have to go back in low.
I'm assuming it wouldn't take, because that's, that's the second question. The city has made the issue about the state foundation, and it'd be great for the administration to be able to tell us why that, besides the fact that they've never been a party to these agreements, why that is kind of a left-field offer or suggestion.
That's why, when we have this conversation, the gentleman that actually did the calculations for the city is gonna be at that meeting, so I'm hoping he'll share his math with me, because it just, we're so far away, there, something, some of our assumptions have to be wrong, but, so, I'm anxious to see that data.
So some of our assumptions are wrong? Or their assumptions, or everybody's, or?
I don't wanna make accusations, but since ours came from the state foundation expert in the state, I'm, if there's an error, I'm guessing it's on the city's side, just because it's so complex and hard to understand, it would be easy for them to make a mistake.
And then, just the last one, at least this first round, there was mention that we had a 2012 amendment to the agreement, somewhere in the publications?
Yeah, I, I think what you're referring to is the amendment when the project TIFs were enacted by the state, and that's when we amended the agreement to allow the city to use those as well in exchange for a 27% pilot. So there's, there's one amendment, it, it doesn't change the substance of agreement, it expands the city's ability to use abatement, this certain type of abatement, and then in exchange, the district gets 27%.
And when we did that amendment, how was that negotiated? I mean, I was on the board, so I recall, and then Ms. Bates will recall too, but it would be good for us to share with the rest of the board and the community, because we've, we've re-entered negotiations, they've left the agreement a couple of times regarding the in-kind contributions, so it has been an active interfacing.
So I don't know, but the amendment that I'm speaking of relating to the TIFs is dated December 18th, 2002, not 12, so.
Okay.
And that is the only amendment to the 99 agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to the administration before we get into the rest of the conversation? Ms. Bates?
Yes, a few things. During our Finance Committee meeting, Ms. Wagner presented our numbers. Are you prepared to present those numbers to the full board today regarding the abatements? And if we, over the course of the agreement, how we have or have not been made whole? I refer to that as, you know, I know that the city came up with their numbers, and your numbers were, were what you presented, but I referred to an alternate compilation or not, or condensed summary, called it Abatements for Dummies. So we ask that you have that ready so it's more understandable, and the public knows where we stand before we go into these conversations with the city and requesting their explanation of their numbers.
So the data that was shared at Finance Committee was taken right out of our presentation to the board in the previous week, so we just pulled that table out, so I wasn't planning to present that today. The presentation for Tax Abatement for Dummies, so to speak, was for the Tax Working Group at Ms. Bolton's request, so, and that's scheduled for the June 12th, I think.
So that will be, how, then what are we going to present to city, to the city administration on the 6th, if the group isn't meeting until the 12th?
Well, for one, the, the numbers that we presented to you, and I have the spreadsheet loaded if you want to see it again, but, but the, in administration's view, the amount that would make the school district whole is the percentage of fixed rate, not fixed sum levies, so we talked about that. What we showed is that, based on the last five years' experience, for example, the district would only be made whole on 25% pilots, which is what we're getting, if we're also getting those $5 million payments from the city, which you know, I think, that the city proposes to eliminate or to stop, to discontinue. So, in our view, in order, in order to make us whole going forward, the percentage of the pilot should be increased to reflect the percentage of fixed rate levies. That, that's, that's kind of our principle that we've been going forward on so far. The, the city, of course, in its presentation, in its letter to, to the board, as well as the presentation that they made at the Finance Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, includes also the state foundation formula, delta, the increase that the city suggests we're getting because of abatements from the state, and, you know, one, we think those numbers are probably flawed, although we're anxious to meet with them to see, to compare, you know, the calculations that they're making. In the presentations they've made so far, they've not gone any further than saying that it's a complicated formula. They haven't shown any numbers behind how they're finding that we're making off so well on our state foundation payments. Secondly, and what's, what's really, I think, confusing and perhaps, you know, pretty troubling about the city's proposed 5% pilot, which was also brought up at the tax, the city Finance and Budget meeting, is that we've seen kind of a proliferation of these abatement agreements, that developers are, you know, pining over a 25% abatement. It's very confusing and troubling as to why the city would propose that, that percentage, when it's already attractive at 25%, should be reduced to 5%. That's what's just, you know, unexplainable to me at this point. That's what's just, you know, unexplainable to me at this point.
Ms. Power?
Yes, in your presentation, I just wanted to note that there was a notation that it was a 2012 amendment to the TIF that you quoted. And just in case you present it again, it says 2012.
I appreciate that very much.
Also?
It's a 2002 amendment.
Okay, but it's typed in there.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry.
But I have a question. In presenting to the city?
Yes.
I know the conversation is around making the district whole, but are we going to pinpoint how the district has been footing the bill for the nurses and the crossing guards? Is that going to be a big push to present that to them, that they have not held up their end of the bargain with that?
That was also a part of the 99 agreement and is, with respect to the nurses and crossing guards, solely the financial responsibility of CPS at this point. So, yeah, to the extent that was a part of the compensation that we expected to receive, we will absolutely be pointing that out.
Okay. Any more questions for the administration? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, to that point, I know the administration recommended that perhaps there not be in-kind parts to this, which would include the, at least the nurses and the crossing guards. I'd like to suggest that, did you also mean the resource officers? Because let me tell you, this board member does not want us to create anything more than a security force. I do not want to create a public school police force. And we've had resource officers since I was in high school, so that's 1,000 years ago. And it needs to be Cincinnati's finest in our, in our schools. So, I, and I also think that, very frankly, I see the wisdom of not including the in-kind, but to Ms. Power's point, that is part of this, I would imagine, the dollar amount that the district was willing to agree to, because that was part of it. But I think there are some in-kind things, especially the resource officers, that we perhaps could be suggesting. And as I've said publicly at least a few times, if we're going to continue to pay for the crossing guards, they need to be our employees. I think the public health nurses need to be city employees for various reasons, their retirement and what have you. But it's my understanding from general counsel that the crossing guards are in a different employee category than some of those others regarding whether or not they're represented in a union or what have you. But I would also say that, just what we heard today, I would hope that the city is bound in this agreement to maintain its participation in almost, what, 11 or so of our school-based health centers, our Cincinnati Public Health Department, school-based health centers. So, I mean, I think there are some in-kind things that we need to be insisting upon, because one of our banner aspects of our district is that we have those school-based health centers. So, I'd just like the administration to kind of rethink the general advice that you gave us or suggestion that you gave us about in-kind, because I think there are some in- kinds that we need to insist on.
So, just to follow that, I couldn't agree more that there are, there are certain services that only the city can provide. When you talk about some of the student pedestrian safety measures that are in place or could be in place, some of those are solely within the city's purview. The SRO program is an example of what really has been, in my view, you know, an excellent working relationship between the city and the school district. The SRO program, I think, has been almost a model for other communities to use. And I think it's been shown that it's not very successful to have police officers employed or even contracted by the school district and other districts. I do think there's benefit to the city as well to have that SRO program in that, you know, that they offer those officers some specialized training that's, you know, applicable to, as opposed to having just a regular police officer, a neighborhood police officer, deal with students and be in schools. I think there's benefit to the city as well in having that training for that category of.
And I know the city of Cincinnati's led the country 1,000 years ago in that. And it's also the first model for community policing.
So, that continues, our only, and certainly I heard that from the board in the last meeting that we had, and again, that there's certain in-kind services that should or must continue. I guess our point is that, you know, in valuing the compensation that we're getting from this agreement, you know, as much as possible looking at dollars, you know, as opposed to trying to, you know, give credit for kind of in-kind services is where we've been.
Ms. Bates?
But then, wouldn't it make sense, it would make sense to me, to remove the SROs from this agreement and have a separate agreement for that and other in- kinds, so it's not, you know, commingled with the financial agreement?
Yeah, perhaps. The SROs are actually mentioned in the same section that talks about the crossing guards and the nurses. So, you know, again, the city hasn't lived up to that portion of the agreement. There's nothing really in the agreement that allows us to hold them accountable for that. We've talked about that that's not, not an enforceable provision, and so, so your point's well taken.
So, it should be noted that when the year they cut the nurses and the crossing guards, they also tried to cut the SROs out of the, and it was a few professional tantrums later that they added it back.
Okay, so, you know, I think, I think we have an opportunity to discuss as a board, you know, if we just shift up about 30,000 feet and think about the journey between now and that point when we have the agreement. You know, and I think maybe there's a few discussion points that will allow us to start to capture our rules for engagement, maybe some of the parameters that we want to make sure that are included in the process. I think there is absolutely a conversation that should be had regarding the resources that we deploy against this and making sure that we've done everything we can to set our administration up for success. And then I think maybe it's important to talk also a little bit about timeline. At the very highest level of the conversation, to kind of dig into a point that I think Ms. Bolton was leading to earlier, we have operated in a, as a board who values transparency, community engagement, et cetera. I think if this were something that we had ultimate control over, we would incorporate some sort of transparency in the process of not only the people that were engaging in the process, but maybe even some of the conversations in some way. You know, I don't think this is something that's done every day, that school boards are negotiating terms with other public entities. But I think specifically this one that has gotten so much community engagement already, driven by us and by other organizations, frankly. You know, I think however we can do, and I'd be very interested in your thoughts as maybe our negotiations team lead, how we might build some sort of the things that we value into that process as we kind of embark on these next few months.
Yeah, so, again, our recommendation or consideration to the board primarily is to stay focused on being made whole. And lots of ways to define that. We suggested kind of the way that the administration is thinking about it in terms of being made whole for that, those fixed rate levies. Part of it is shifting the view toward this agreement. So, the city, Phil Denning presented, he's the director of economic development for the city. He presented at the city council meeting that I attended. And I've heard this kind of sentiment before, but, you know, they'll flash pictures, before and after pictures of lots that were sort of degraded, and then, you know, there's a beautiful new $100 million apartment complex. And the city's view at times has been, what's the school district complaining about? This denigrated lot was generating X dollars, and this new lot is generating X plus 1. So, at least, if it's X plus 1, there's absolutely nothing the school district should be complaining about. That's not how I view, you know, property taxes. If you decide to build a $100 million apartment complex, then the school district is entitled to a share of the property taxes that are generated from that parcel. It's a very similar, you know, approach that FC Cincinnati started when we started to engage them in conversations. If you'll remember, their first offer, and this is very public, it was, you know, shared in the letters that were back and forth. FC's first offer to us was that they would maintain the $70,000 that the parcels that would encompass the stadium were currently generating. In other words, we would be held harmless, was kind of the concept that they initially proposed. What the board pushed back on was, if you decide to build a $250 million stadium and make that kind of commitment to the neighborhood, which we're, you know, supportive of, then there's a, the taxes that are generated, it's not $70,000, and it's not $70,000 plus 1. We're not just grateful for the one extra dollar. There's a certain amount of taxes that that property will generate, and we're entitled to be made whole for that. And ultimately, to FC's credit, you know, they made that commitment, and that's where we ultimately agreed and landed, is that they would make the school district whole for its share of taxes. So, you just, in my view, you really have to be careful, kind of listening to different arguments, because it can be attractive and appealing to say, oh, you know, any kind of economic development is going to benefit the school district, and that's true. But, but again, there's a make-whole amount that, you know, is where we recommend that we remain focused on. That's the amount that the school district's entitled to.
Ms. Bates? I'm sorry, Ms., yeah, Ms. Bates, sorry.
Yeah, but it's more than that, because, yeah, we'll be made whole, and we may win that battle. But if the abatements continue as they have been, that's giving an increased burden on another class of taxpayer, and that's creating, you know, a pushback, a political pushback on, with regard to our levies. And we can no longer say, your taxes won't go up in our levies, because their taxes may go up due to the abatements, especially on, well, particularly on the fixed sum levies. We can say, taxes won't go up. So, we may win this battle of being made whole, but we could lose the war on, you know, favor in the community in passing our levies. So, there's a little bit more to it than just focusing on being made whole.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, and I appreciate the administration, and particularly General Counsel and Treasurer, narrowly defining the issue. But I would more broadly define it, define it as meeting our longer-term needs, especially as we have our strategic plan coming up. It won't do us any good to get $10 million annually if indeed we have to spend it on school-based health centers, because now it's a service that is expected. It won't help us if we have to find a way to create a police force or reimburse the city. So, I think that we have to narrowly define what would make us whole, for sure, from a standpoint of the amount of money. But I'm also, to your point about how they've been expanding and accelerating this, I know that the public is also very concerned about the residential piece, because that's a new kind of wrinkle in all of this. And what's happening long-term, to Ms. Bates's point of view, there is this developing tax resentment, and people aren't, they may not be aware that the city can make all these deals and it doesn't impact their revenue. It's impacting the zoo's revenue, the schools' revenues, the hospitals, the folks that are in the elder, you know, levy issues. So, they get to make all these decisions and talk about economic development, but it's impacting our revenue. And it would make sense to me to more broadly interpret it from a standpoint of making us whole in more ways than just the financial piece, as well as, I think the community, the public wants to see us exercise a lot more responsibility. And I don't know that we want it regarding these tax credits or whatever they are, abatements, because the community's out there thinking, we have some say in this, and our votes are nothing more than perfunctory because of the negotiations that occurred. So, that's another thing from the administration that we do want to see, is that chart of what we really are allowed to do and what we really aren't allowed to do. And if we have that, that would be helpful from a standpoint of what powers do we have? Because I know that the city claims that there's a review committee that reviews what they do, and I guess it must be at the state, because I haven't found it locally. But maybe we have to have one to review what we agree to or not agree to, or when do we ever get to be involved in the discussion? Not that we want to, but I just think there are broader terms that, parameters that the board needs to consider, even shared services or something like that.
Can I respond to that? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and, you know, to build on that, you know, I think one way to approach that, this agreement, is that, you know, we kind of look at the current agreement and we start to say, okay, this should change, and then this needs to switch, and then we do this, and then that's it. So, to me, that's one way we could approach this. The other, which is far much more difficult, in my opinion, but I personally believe absolutely required, is that it is looked at more holistically, just building on what Ms. Bolton said. If you look at the current activity across Ohio, and you look at Cleveland, and you look at Cincinnati, Columbus, who have both either a year ago or at this very moment looking through this, their abatements aren't just about, well, how do we change what we had last year for this next? They're looking at, how do we help support the growth of the city more diverse, from a more diverse standpoint, by looking at potentially incorporating some sort of requirements on affordable housing and requirements that with the abatements come commitments for affordable housing? And I think that that's worth a conversation, but again, I think that's going to take more effort. And I know there's an appetite at City Hall to have these same sorts of conversations. And my question is, how do those conversations at city council that I've had individual conversations about, get to their negotiating team? And I think, if I think about the children that are the face of CPS, many of their families would benefit from us also supporting that sort of requirement and incorporating that into the overall outcome of this abatement. How do we, how do we kind of put those together to see what the temperature is? Maybe not at their negotiating level, but maybe with city council and other leaders who would support that sort of next-generation agreement for our city? Ms. Bates?
And just to kind of piggyback on that concept, I would also like for the city to produce some numbers as to how the, if the population is growing as a result of these abatements. I don't really, I think, I don't really think it is. It is marginally, because that's part of what we're about, is growing our school district and not pushing our families out. We want our families to remain in the school district and attract other families and businesses into the school district. So, requesting some information on, you know, whether these abatements indeed are not just helping us financially, but if they're helping to grow the population so we can grow our district. We're growing because we're, you know, pulling more students back from charter schools, and we're attracting the immigrant and refugee population. But, you know, what is the city's role in growing? We used to be a city of, what, 500,000 people, and we're down to 300,000. Certainly, there was room at some point for a greater population, and I think that that should be part of it as well.
Could I respond just briefly to Ms. Bolton asked for, I think in the previous meeting, sort of what's legal, what's not legal, what we can request in negotiations, and what wouldn't be on the table? So, we've started to put that chart together. I'll just really quickly go through a couple of slides. You know, in terms of reimbursement, exactly as you said, the current agreement calls for us to be reimbursed for those abatements that we would otherwise have to approve. In other words, CRAs that are for industrial or commercial, or, you know, TIFs in excess of... of 75%. So, so the parties could agree to reimbursement for all forms of abatements that the city is approving, such as residence, residential CRAs. There's nothing in the law that prohibits the parties from, or the city, those developers from reimbursing the school district for those residential abatements. It's not currently done because we don't have an approval right under, by statute, but, but presumably you could have an agreement where we are reimbursed for those. Moreover, in terms of approval, the approval process, which I think is something you mentioned also, in the current agreement, we waive all of our notice and approval rights that we would have. The parties could agree to some kind of approval or oversight authority. You talked about a committee review and, and, you know, that's certainly possible. Just some of the other terms, the current term of the agreement is 20 years. The parties could agree to any term. We've talked about shortening it. The pilot, currently we've got 25% on CRAs and project TIFs of 27%. The administration has proposed an annual recalculation that reflects the full amount of fixed rate levies. For 18, that would be about 33%. Others have suggested to increase the percentage to ease the taxpayers' burden on those fixed sum levies. So, you know, that's, that's something that's been suggested and certainly could be agreed to in negotiations. And then the city, of course, has proposed decreasing the pilot. So what's possible there is, is, you know, any, any kind of pilot is, is permissible. As far as an annual payment, the current agree, I'm sorry. Yeah.
In your universe?
Yes.
What does not having an agreement look like?
Yeah, so this is what not having an agreement looks like. And the city has talked about what, and in fact, sort of suggested that it, it could live with or without an agreement. I, I think, that's not exactly quoting the city manager's letter, but it's close. With an agreement, the city has more flexibility in the abatements and the incentives that it can offer. So for a CRA, it can offer up to 100%. A CRA, I'm sorry, with an agreement, the city can offer up to 100% for up to 15 years. With no agreement, it can only offer up to 50% for up to 15 years. So in terms of if, if the city's competing for a commercial development or an industrial development and it's competing with other communities that do have that flexibility to go up to 100%, presumably the city would be at a competitive disadvantage without an agreement. Same for TIF, that the, the amount and the term is greater if the city has an agreement with us than if it does not. And, and that's true for all the different types of abatements or most of the types of abatements.
How, how does that impact our reimbursement?
So we would not be reimbursed for the piece that's abated. So if, without an agreement, we would not be reimbursed. However, it would be for a shorter term, the abatement would be for a shorter term and presumably be for less of a percentage.
But Dan, wouldn't we also be sharing in their revenue? 50% of their collective revenue?
So in addition, so we, you know, if the city proceeds without an agreement from us, in most cases, if the new income that's generated from that development, because remember, the city gets income taxes, we do not, if the new income that's generated is greater than $1 million, the city has to reimburse us 50% of the income taxes that's generated on that new revenue. It's really a very complicated and just, just unwieldy provision that, that in some ways, in and of itself, has caused some cities and school districts to say, we need an agreement because it's very difficult to calculate and to determine what is the new income that's generated from those, from those properties. The city has said, by the way, that it does not believe that it's the developments, agreements that it's entering into will have a, a significant impact on the, that income tax provision, but that's, that's what they've said.
I mean, Ms. Bolton, sorry.
To, to the chair's point earlier, how do we get to that place of where we're talking about bigger, more inclusive, more comprehensive issues, maybe like they do in Cleveland or Columbus or, or some of, address some of our interests as we, you know, get ready to embark on our strategic plan? I think you do that similarly to the FC experience, which is a lot of community engagement, which frankly, we've had some and other community groups have been able to share the results of their efforts. So, and we know the research from the other cities. I think you do it by creating a resolution of what our parameters are. I mean, I think the administration team right now is going into battle, if you will, to try to fight, if you will, about the numbers and at least understand where we disagree because the, nothing's going to happen until there's at least an awareness of what the numbers are or an awareness as to, we disagree on this one, but we agree on that. So I think that's, that's immediate and happening now, but I think it would be really useful for the board, and I think we've talked about it before, is coming up with a broad group of parameters that then kind of guide what we want to see. But I think that's public because I think what you want to do is put this in, in part in the court of the City Council rather than necessarily individuals that can then come back and report. And, and I think City Council at least has the same sorts of pressures that we have regarding expectations by the community as to what might be fair and not fair. And right now, they're in a worse position than we are regarding the abatement discussion from a standpoint that I think it's, there's certainly a negative feeling about abatements. And, and I, again, expanding not only the parameters, as you suggest, the housing piece or more of a review committee or what have you, but we were in a period apparently where we were giving away a lot of the board's power, whether it was to the, you know, the teachers' union or whether it was to somebody else or the city. I think we do need to relook at where our authority is and, not that we want it necessarily, but I think it's time to review how much we want to limit our authority. But I would do this in a form of open dialogue among the board members like we're having and more, and create a, a, a resolution of what our proposal is rather than a negotiation stand that the public doesn't even know and sending several people in to try to get the best deal they can get. I think we, we make everybody play by the rules that we've been playing by frankly the last couple of years.
And if I can add to that, I mean, if I'm just taking off my school board hat and putting on the work hat, of how you would approach something like, this is a big, a big undertaking. And I actually think that we start from a position of having a lot more in common than not with our partners at City Council. I have a great deal of respect for Paula Boggs Muthing, Luke Blocher, going to be a new Cannes parent and can have several coming through those doors. But it's a complex process of you've got us who, I mean, this is when we can talk, you know, and this is where we have our conversations, they have theirs. Of course, you run into a City Council member here and there and I've heard similar sorts of desires and, you know, I, to me, I think, yes, we will have our negotiating teams and I think they have to maybe step number one, establish some rules of engagement, how they're going to function, how do you build transparency and all those types of things. But setting this up as a project, I would also see a parallel path whereby perhaps, and I know this was something that we talked about, kind of the resources. And I think this is where maybe it's starting to break through, at least in my head, because there's negotiating team, but there's always also somebody that I think that we need to have as a relationship manager, that as we start to lay out some parameters, that maybe we have someone on our behalf that can also then have some of those conversations and facilitate some of those conversations with people at City Council. Because how perfect would it be if both bodies had a resolution that were the exact same because it was based on community engagement, it was based on doing what's right for our community and that type of thing? But then there's also another whole body of work, which is what's being done other places? And one thing that has always frustrated me about, I don't know if it's just a Cincinnati thing or if it's a, a government thing, but it's almost like everything has to be done and created here and you almost put blinders to what's happening in other places. And I think having someone who helps us broker the conversations between the two boards without having to pull all of City Council and all, all school board together, to just connect the dots, to get everyone to kind of an agreed set of parameters that is widely accepted and, and based on community engagement, then someone who can then pull in subject matter experts, what's working well in that Cleveland agreement, why Columbus, you know, I think we can learn a whole lot from the process that they probably went on, that journey they went on for a year or two years before they got to that point, that, that might actually speed up our process because they obviously have had some learnings along the way, what would you do different, more of and that type of thing? Well, you got to have somebody go pull that from them. The likelihood that somebody from the school board or City Council is going to come down and say, here's what you should do, but I'd love somebody to go sit with those people. I'd love somebody to go say, hey, here's the exact parameters of their agreement, here's what's different, here's some things that they say was very valuable, they're glad they did it. One thing they wish they would have done is this. So I think there's kind of helping to set up the highest level between the two boards and what are we all kind of aligning to, because again, I think there's more in common there. And then at the same time, have the rules of engagement of how the operations of negotiations are to work, how that team's going to come together. And then once we get this almost joint City Council and School Board resolution with here are the requirements, then I think you can have magic. But until we get those two bodies aligned, we can have what we want and it can go there and fall flat unless City Council said, well, here are, here's what we're stating needs to be considered. Because I, I'm with Ms. Bolton, I get it that residential abatements are not part of this agreement, but I also get it that those are additional tax dollars that determine whether somebody pays more or less and then has impact to the overall taxation strategy that impacts the average everyday Cincinnatian. So, but getting alignment on how all of these things fit in here, I feel like we need to have somebody working on our behalf who helps to have those conversations to get that alignment so we can share with the community that, hey, now we really have something. If, if it is true, what I hear at City Hall, that there has been work to think about how they look at this particular topic with consideration for affordable housing. I think we would celebrate that, our community would celebrate that, and that would be a big win. But I think we have to get that agreement before now that becomes part of the output because right now, we can force that up, but unless this negotiating committee goes and does that work, it may still be search and replace in the 99 agreement versus whiteboarding and say, what needs to be different? Now let's write an agreement.
I would, I would agree and I, with most of that, I think maybe all of it, I, I would say that the way we do it first is get the numbers appropriate as best we can or again, at least know what those numbers are and how they arrived at and they need to know how we arrived at it. But I do broadly think that as a body, we can outline what our vision is and I think it would then force to its, at a certain extent, or encourage to a certain extent, depending upon how they feel about it, the council to also say some things publicly, which they've said and some things privately individually, to find that common ground on the broad strokes, as well as have our experts that are here negotiating find the common ground on numbers. I mean, there's two different things here. There's common numbers that we have to find and that's the expert, we, I'm going to go with what, you know, the treasurer says as to how, what would make us whole. It worked regarding FC. So those things, I don't see that as ours as, as figuring it out. It's us saying, we need our experts and she's got the number one person in the state on the foundation or what have you. So the, those professionals, just like everything else, the professionals do that part, but the political, the elected bodies have to be the broader voices of, of what's best for the community as a whole. We want economic development, but we also want to be able to say that we can't keep losing revenue and we also wanted to, Ms. Bates's point, we want families moving in here. We don't necessarily keep wanting industrial things or whatever that just is income tax and we have deferred, you know, property tax and hope that we're, the district's still around in 15 years to, to get it. So there are things, and so I would, I would encourage us to maybe have an additional resource person that helps facilitate our larger community discussion in front of the community and also then somehow can help others understand our broader interests when discussing stuff with the City Council. But it would have to be somebody that's our advocate. It's not like they're a, a mediator necessarily or whatever, but I want us to have this discussion out in the public, among ourselves, write it as a resolution, pass it as a resolution and have our experts figure out some of the numbers. That's, I think there's, there's parallel effort there. And then maybe that third lane that you're talking about, what's happening in the rest of the state and somebody advising us about that.
I'd love to hear the superintendent's thoughts kind of on that, kind of on that idea. You know, because I think there, there's the scope of work of the search and replace for the 99, that's kind of option one, that, not to say that that's not difficult, but it's far easier than taking it up to a 30,000-foot view. So one question I have for the superintendent is, do you think a resource to help determine if that higher level is what that looks like, if it's possible and if there's alignment with our partners at the city, is that something you find, would find helpful?
I think that an external resource could be helpful at the right time, but to Board Member Bolton's point, this is an advocate for CPS. I believe that the board took a very strong and powerful stand with the negotiations of FC Cincinnati, which was led by a lot of community conversation, followed by a resolution where again, the board took a very direct stand in terms of their position to support the district, which I believe the board gained a lot of public support and respect for in that, in that respect. I believe that the public is probably expecting a similar type of process to be able to be engaged and to be able to give their input and to also be able to have these conversations in a very public venue. I also believe that it's in our best interest to obviously have our experts meet with the staff members for the city to be able to have the conversation about the numbers and to be able to dispel any misinformation that may be out there and to come to some understanding of what the true and actual numbers are. At that point, maybe it makes sense after that is cleared up and there are public conversations and there's a resolution to move forward with an external person who has the best interests of the district at heart.
Thank you.
If you would oblige me, I want to go back to a conversation I was having about the no agreement. So I understand that you told me there, no reimbursement, that's a percentage. And then Treasurer Wagner said, but we do share in revenue. I guess for me practically, at the end of the day, if we have no agreement, do we lose? Will the district in our, in your made whole scenario, will we be less than if there is no agreement? Is there, or is there a pathway to being made whole with no agreement?
So really hard question, I think, whether, whether we would be better off with or without an agreement. Again, the abatements that can be offered are, are less generous, that, the abatements that the city can offer are less generous when, when there's no agreement. Whether that spurs development in the same way is, is really hard to tell. If the city, again, is competing against a community that does have the ability to give a full abatement, we may lose out on some development and, and not only, you know, could that be, you know, detrimental to the school district, it could be detrimental to the city and the other, and the other public entities that receive tax, tax dollars. With no agreement- With no agreement, however, the, the school district gets full taxes on those properties much sooner, so, you know, in most cases. So you look at, at an enterprise zone, you know, that we would be receiving the full tax revenues after 10 years as opposed to 15 years. Do you see what I'm saying? So-
I see what you're saying, but from my, my limited brain power, um, I'm really just trying to get to pure, pure mathematics.
Yeah.
Like, will we win, or is there a pathway to winning with no agreement? Cause at, at the end of the day, in any negotiation-
Yeah.
-it's agreement, no agreement. So it's like, most of our conversation today has been about-
Right.
-the universe of an agreement and the, uh, interplay of how we even get more from this agreement. I wanna have a conversation, I wanna have a firm understanding about what no agreement looks like for the Cincinnati Public Schools. I'm not concerned about developers, growth, the city of Cincinnati, what does no agreement look like for the Cincinnati Public Schools? Like, do we lose? Cause if we lose, in, in my spirit, I wanna take no agreement out my mind.
Yeah. I, I think there's a percentage at which with an agreement, you know, if, if our pilot is 5%, I, I think with an agreement is, is not going to be as successful for the school district, not gonna be as good for the school district than without an agreement. Um, where, where that line goes, you know, 5%, 15% currently, it's 25%. I, I really don't think we should reduce the percentage of a pilot that, that we're receiving. Um, and, and again, if the city intends to stop making any kind of annual payment to us, then I think we need to increase the pilot. That's, that's been our recommendation to that fixed rate amount. Um, so, so again, what, with an agreement or without an agreement depends on how generous or how, how good the agreement is for us, whether that's better or worse. Um, the second part is what it looks like if we don't have an agreement, what, what it feels like for CPS. You know, one is, again, the city's more limited in the abatements that it can offer. It could still, developers and/or the city could still approach the school board on an individual case-by-case basis. We've seen that before. We, we saw that earlier this year with a developer that was approaching finance committee, um, with a request to do an agreement with us that would've, uh, had the developer contributing less than 25%. And, and ultimately, the school board rejected that proposal, but I have to tell you, it took, I don't know, six finance committee meetings and, and a couple of board meetings for, for one proposed abatement agreement. Uh, you know, i- if, if we are receiving those at, at the clip that abatements are currently being offered in the city, that the school board or finance committee or somebody on the administration is spending a heck of a lot of time trying to evaluate on a case-by-case-by-case basis, uh, the, the value and the wisdom of entering into a new abatement agreement.
Very, very helpful. Now, if I could come back to where we were, I, I, and I appreciate you all obliging, very helpful. Back to, um, timeliness, uh, I would think that the time for external resources now, or yesterday, this, this, not now, yesterday. I'm, I'm, I'm about a week behind where I think, uh, the time for external resource is, particularly if, uh, to Member Messer's point, this person or this entity is a relationship manager, and, uh, to Member Bolton's point, that this person is an advocate that can help us get to the bigger picture, then I think it's, it's not only about helping the negotiations team, but it's more about helping city council members from, uh, an elected body to elected body perspective about how this is more than just a conversation about the 99 agreement. Um, and, and I do agree with, um, with, um, Dan, I was trying to say-
Dan's good.
Whatever you are. I do agree with Mr. Hoing that us being made whole is the critical core crux of the matter and all other, and all other involvements are secondary. And whether it's in kind or whether there are other services, I think we need to clearly delineate between the agreement or non-agreement and all other things. And if there, to Member Bates's point, if there is a necessity for two agreements, then I think we need to call that out because the tax abatement is one thing and all other services seem to be clearly another thing, although they were once mixed in a 99 agreement back in 1999, but today they don't seem to be mixed outside of the SRO. So it, it seems to me that there are two separate conversations in that regard and a third that's more general and, um, quite frankly, for me, more hopeful in how this conversation can generate a much greater, um, a much greater atmosphere for our, for our whole city, particularly in regards to, um, getting the city and the school district on one, on one accord, which would be best for everybody.
If I could add to that, um, I mean, is there something to that where our highest level is, we agree that it just needs to be made whole, um, through an objective agreement, um, of what that looks like? So we have alignment on the numbers, the calculation, et cetera, and we align on that. If we can get a baseline with the negotiating committee that really, kind of like with, with FC, make us whole, not 70,000, not, just make us whole. So that's point one. And then on behalf of our children and the families that we serve, we engage as a community partner and as an advocate frankly, of those stakeholders on these other pieces. Um, and the resolution is coming from this body to say, make us whole. That, that's what we're about. At the same time, we would be remiss if we didn't stand up for the very families and children that we serve, if we didn't offer these things with this resolution. What I would love to know for that resolution though, um, I mean, I think the first thing I'd love, you know, because I think there's an, there's a, a variety of things that this relationship manager slash other resource could do, but I would love a full presentation to this board of what have other si- similar cities done in the last 24 months, 36 months, in this exact environment, um, that has proven to be a successful outcome for all parties that we could learn from and maybe some things that, that weren't. But I think it would be very interesting for a presentation by somebody who could aggregate that for us. Let me take you through what Cleveland did. And so I've read the, the news articles, and you only get so much, and I couldn't find like, here's the actual agreement itself, and here's something that compared the two and whatever. So, you know, I think that would be a, a very interesting next step for us, is for us to ground ourselves. Sometimes I think maybe we don't know what we don't know. Maybe they put some other things in, then they were like, huh, that would be interesting to put in there. So, um, knowing that, you know, according, according to the news and what I could find online and very simple Googling and that type of thing, Columbus is in the midst of it, and Cleveland has done it, sounds like, a year ago. Um, what was their process? What was included? What could we learn from? And then we bake that, you know, of course, we need that sooner than later, but bake that into kind of what we would set forth in a resolution with hopes that perhaps even city council then, as we talked about, could mirror that, which would then, uh, take the conversation, um, maybe to a higher level than, um, maybe what they are currently intending. Ms. Bates?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanna kind of touch on several of these points. Back to the, the district handling the individual abatements. I mean, number one, that's gonna take us away from our mission, big time. And as Mr. Hoing said, we handled one of these. I'll tell you, it was, the, the gentleman, you know, wanted individual coffees with us, he took it to the community council, tried to build a case there. Now we have other organizations, uh, also, uh, you know, who have, have organized with regard to abatements. It will be very political. We have, um, we don't have an economic development expert on staff. Uh, this isn't going to fall on just the board. We don't have the expertise as board members to make those kinds of decisions. So, uh, after, you know, and, and we had tossed around this idea, if that's what the city is heading towards as their, you know, as their, uh, uh, ultimatum, well, you could do it yourself. I suppose we can, but it's going to be with great effort and it's going to be very political. It will pull us away from our mission of educating kids. And as long as I've been on this board, I've worked very hard to make sure that we move it back to the kids and away from issues that are important. We need to fund our schools, but that's not what the board and the administration should be dealing with on a day-to-day basis. Uh, as far as external, uh, an external, uh, resource person to deal politically, we heard from the city administration how they view this agreement going down, and they don't mention city council. Well, Mr. DeHany must have blinders on if he doesn't think city council isn't going to get involved with this. I mean, really, there's going to be as much, uh, political pressure on those individual members over this agreement as with the individual abatements. So they're going to be very much influenced, and the city council members need to know the correct information upfront, not us going in behind, uh, doing damage control. So I really, you know, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Davis, and I think, was it, Ms. Bolton, that said that we really, no, it was Mr. Messer, that said that we really need, you know, assistance in relationship building right now and not going in at the tail end and trying to undo what the city administration may have built as, as their platform. And as far as going to other cities, I really need to disagree with you, Mr. Messer, but Cleveland did it, but has anybody been reading the, uh, the ongoing story, uh, by the fine dealer about the corruption as a result and how many people are going to jail because of all the, you know, uh, situations that have occurred with, uh, you know, with bribery and backroom deals and, you know, relatives getting contracts and, you know, I, that, I don't think we wanna even look at Cleveland. I think we want to, yeah, look at them and say, that's not what we want to happen in, in Cincinnati, you know, regardless of, of how they came about. You know, I'm not familiar with what happened in Columbus, but as we have, uh, moved forward with our, uh, agenda for reforming schools, I'm not sure we really, I, I, I would be reluctant to put resources in what went on in other cities. Uh, I, I've heard good things actually about Atlanta. I mean, that may be a more appropriate model for us to look at than what's gone on in our own state because, you know, and, and maybe we know more about what's going on in our state, but, uh, I'd rather put the resources, uh, in external, uh, relationship building, uh, making sure that, that we're made whole and, uh, that we minimize the, um, politicizing of this on an ongoing basis so we can focus on our main mission of educating children.
Ms. Bates? I mean, Ms. Bolton.
It's must be that chair.
See, I, I get it, the B in the B, and I get it. I know.
That's only the fourth chair that has done that in the last 10 years. I think that's, I think that's a good idea, although I'm not leaving, remember, David. Yeah. B O B. Hey, um, I, I think we can learn either positive or negative lessons as to how other cities or villages are doing this. I think we do need to know what our actual statutory authority is, and I think you've shared that, and hopefully if there's, if there's another complete or more complete statement about it, so that we know if we're exercising all the authority we have or we are deciding not to because it may not fit our mission. I, I, so I need that broad sense, cause I don't wanna go to the public and say, ah, we decided not to do it because, or hey, we didn't wanna spend that time on that, or whatever. Um, so I just need a better understanding of the, of the broad authority or lack thereof. I, um, I don't, I want to have an additional resource, not necessarily only for us, but because the administration is so taxed already with both the strategic plan and the opening schools and god knows what else is happening. So I think an outside person to relieve some of the pressure on the administration would be gra- good, and I appreciate the treasurer making sure we have the expert regarding state funding, uh, in our, in our corner. Beyond that though, I don't wanna have a third-party person doing anything until the board has determined what it is that we want. I don't, and I think we need that third person, that additional person for the administration and for us, but we as a board have to come up. Now, maybe that third person helps us facilitate some sort of discussion with, with administration and the board, working together to come up with something that we can believe in. Um, none of this can happen apparently by law in executive session, correct? And we are operating with another entity, a city council, that has had some issues regarding public effort and public meetings, and I don't, so I don't wanna do anything that gets kind of their modus operandi influencing us. So it seems to me that we ought to be able as a board to kind of have a consensus that we're gonna need some third-party resource. The timing of that is something we can further discuss, but nobody's gonna be able to represent us until we tell people what it is that we believe in and what we're pursuing, because the administration can't do that, and a third-party person can't do that. Only the board can do that. And, and so I think that's our pressure. July is not gonna be a good month to do anything with everybody out of town and everywhere. So the idea that we wanna do this, hopefully before the levy vote, we have to come up with what we want in the next week. Let's just be serious. And we have to be able to forge some kind of a resolution, even if it's broadly or specifically written, almost and pass it by June 10th, at the June 10th meeting. So for using today as a start of that, we have to figure out how we in those 10 days that are coming up are gonna be able to have a board discussion to outline the parameters, also have somebody advise us as to what else is happening around the state as we send our people in to argue and debate and discuss the numbers. But we have to do this like to Mr. Bates, to Mr. Bates. This is great. Uh, we have to do this now. We can't keep just talking about this stuff. We've been on this for three years. We've been on it. You can look at committee reports, you can look at the board, uh, you can look at the rebroadcasts, and god forbid anybody ever do that, but, but I think that we even use the, some minutes today about where there might be some consensus points and, and then also some areas that we might wanna pursue further.
I mean, I think that's, uh, an excellent, um, framework that kind of starts the, uh, or gets us to the starting line, which is that what is it that we want? And, and kind of to, to Ms. Bates's comments, I'm not saying that what other, every other city did is what should be done. Um, that's the best part about benchmarking. You can learn from other people's mistakes and steal their great ideas that might've come if they did some crazy community engagement and benchmarked themselves, et cetera, um, something that we incorporate, um, uh, on every project that we work on, kind of in the work world. It's, the first question is, what did you benchmark? What did you learn? Okay, great. Now take us through, um, kind of, uh, your work and how you got to this particular solution. So, um, based on that and kind of the, the notes that I have here, um, if we say that, um, we would like to set a, a date of, is that, that meeting is June the 10th, correct? Um, pardon me?
Yes.
A week from Monday. Um, if we said that, um, we would like to formalize, uh, perhaps what we would like to call, um, uh, maybe our overall expectations and, and rules of engagement for this process that may or may not include a resolution that calls those out specifically. Um, and knowing that, um, I'm pretty sure, given, um, you know, we don't have lots of extra people sitting around here, that if we lay out some things, it'd be, uh, maybe not likely that the, the administration could stop what they're doing to go pull all of this together. Um, so- So I think I heard a couple of people say having a resource could help us get to that Maybe we lay out what would we like, or what would we need to have on that June 10th that would allow us to say, we feel really good about this, we're ready to move forward, and we have kind of amalgamated the feedback we've gotten from our input sessions already, the board meeting conversations that we've had, and we can put that into something that we all can align on and then provide that to our negotiating team. But now your meeting is before that, and so maybe that meeting, I mean, I know.
It's just to compare numbers, though. I mean, we've been getting very direct.
Yeah, okay, so good. So that's comparing numbers, good. So this allows us then to have that board alignment on the 10th so that we can fire up the engines and really start to move forward. And then as we align on those expectations and that potential resource that helps us do that, we can make sure that, you know, the likelihood that members of city council, et cetera, are going to show up to hear that, that we then have that taken forward. And here's the why, and here's how we got to that. Here's, we learned this best practice. We saw this was happening in other cities, and so they can help get that, the background and kind of what we align on to our other elected bodies. Thoughts?
Yes, so we have two other meetings this, this coming month, the 10th and the 24th. We know that the administration's presenting to us something regarding the strategic plan. Do we have the 19th as well? So if there's the 19th meeting, do we have three of them? That would be 10th, 19th, is that correct? Good. That gives us three meetings. So then if we have a broad discussion with all of our members here on the 10th, we could probably find an opportunity between that 10th and the 19th to write a resolution, it would seem to me, and either on the 10th or the 19th, whoever is that resource that's going to present what else is happening in the state, they could do that on the 10th or the 19th. I think that then you are able to have a general knowledge as to what the resolution's going to look like by the 19th of June, and you can pass it either then or you can pass it on the 24th. And I, but I do think that today it wouldn't be a bad idea to use a little bit more time, just a few minutes, to at least see where we have some consensus on what the administration has recommended because they gave that to us last month twice, if I recall, and once this month or something like that, and, and see if there's some areas where they need to think that maybe we don't like that or like it, or just give them a little bit more big, big broad brush discussion. I mean, we know we, we know we want to be made whole financially, there's consensus about that. We know that they recommended that whatever's in the previous agreement, it has to be grandfathered and not changed. So it has to be, we have to, we have to recoup whatever we're supposed to be recouping in the successor agreement in the previous agreement, from the previous agreement. I mean, those are, those are like easy, I think we all would agree that, that they can't now rewrite the old agreement benefits, it would seem to me. And they're recommending that 5 million now is not, in 1999, is not the kind of number that we would want in 2019, meaning the pilot 5 million based upon the stadiums. You're thinking in terms of those numbers being higher, but we don't know what the number is yet, right? And we're thinking that the percentages would be higher than they were in the 99 agreement, and they have to be able to advise us as to what that would be. I think we all agree, nobody's going to sign a 20-year agreement ever again about anything. So there's that consensus point, I think, from the board and the administration on their recommendations. And where we may differ is, at least from my standpoint, is on the in-kind, but I think I heard that too from some other board members. I worry about the in-kind not being part of the abatement piece because we'll never get the city to talk about it again. We got the city to agree some years ago to help us find space for preschool. They even passed it by resolution. Never heard another word. So I think our opportunity to meet with them is about this, and this is also when the community's going to be focusing on it. So that increases our opportunity since we might be viewed as the, you know, the injured party if it doesn't work out. So, I mean, I think there's consensus pieces there. I, I still think you somehow have to, you know, it has to be the TIFs and the CRAs, but I think we're going to have to have some major discussion as a board about this residential stuff because in the end, that's going to cost us almost as much as anything if they keep this up. So where we agree and where we disagree might be kind of areas, or where we say yes to the administration and no to the administration might be helpful. And then as a board, we're not allowed to deliberate unless we're here, so everybody brings their ideas on the 10th as to what should be included.
Yeah, and I was just thinking that, you know, I'm hearing lots of kind of points that we would almost one by one to say, do we agree on this? So duration of the agreement, do we agree that residential property, even though not specifically part of the 99 agreement, has implications and should be part of the conversation? I think what I've heard is there, there seems to be a lot, I think we have 100%, that this has to be a very transparent process, and we have to hold our city partners accountable to that, not saying that they don't want to, but just, just communicating that that is a requirement. I think also maybe one thing that I put on the list here is just transparency of reporting. I think this goes back to some of the other conversations that we've had up until this point, even a conversation with Finance, their Budget Committee Chair, Council Member Mann, he said, well, I'll just pull the report for you. Let me, and then, you know, we talked through that. Well, he was as shocked as I was that that report didn't. So I think having transparency of reporting for these agreements through the duration of the agreement, that would be a requirement. So there's the transparency of the reporting as they're, they're done, but then an annual reporting, kind of an annual reconciliation perhaps, that would allow us to not have to go back five years of data, that at the end of the year, it's just part of the process. We reconcile all the agreements and do a 2020 report of here were the agreements and this was what happened. I would like to have, you know, that maybe an, kind of an independent review of, you know, an audit of the made whole. So it's, so it's not, oh, well, the school said this or this, that it is a kind of review of the made whole agreement. We said duration. Anything else that, that anyone thinks that we would want to build consensus to?
I, I think the in-kind.
Oh, yeah.
I think the in-kind, what is to be in-kind and what isn't, and, and the idea also of the broader parameters of statement regarding where we are about abatements, meaning, as you mentioned, the mixed housing or affordable housing piece. I mean, I think, so there's, there's, there's the financial piece and the agreement piece. There's, there's also this in-kind piece, and I think also where we assume, we understand what our accountability is because I've been very unclear with the public as to what we can and cannot do. And I feel stupid when people ask me, well, you voted on it. Well, that's one of those perfunctory votes. We, it's the tail end of it, we had nothing to say. That, that has to be somehow discussed. And I, I think, I think we should also be asking about some shared services and space.
Yeah.
I feel very strongly about that regarding preschool, feel strongly about that from a nutritional standpoint in the summers, and, and I think I'm going to, I'm going to bugaboo about this, but on the safety piece, I think the community, having gone to the, to the pedestrian safety summit, 80% of the questions were about schools. And I think this is the time to get the city and the school district to work more together and make a commitment about greater safety around our schools, particularly at our high schools. And, and they were told that the reason that they can't do some of the stuff is because we have not updated our safety, Safe Routes to School Safety Plan. And people stood up and said that, well, we've, we've been trying. So I think there's things that we could seize the moment, but I think shared service, in-kind, shared services and space, and then making some commitments regarding safety are very important to me. And it's, how can they, how can anybody say no to that? I mean, that's where the community is.
Any other thoughts?
Well.
Ms. Bates?
As far as the in-kind, the reason I wanted to pull it out was for accountability, and there certainly wasn't accountability in the prior agreement. So I would be open to including it if there was a provision for accountability, which is kind of important, isn't it? As far as the reimbursement for the administrative costs, I think that's, who's doing it? I mean, who's, that's what we found out when, when we in finance wanted to or required the administration to produce a report. You know, the city didn't have the report, we didn't have the report, you know, we're not sure if the auditor had the report. It has to be housed somewhere, and if it's going to be us, then, you know, that it's not totally on us, it shouldn't be our total and sole responsibility to keep track of this for the city. So whether we seek reimbursement or the city produces, you know, quarterly reports or whatever, but that's, that's a big part of this because we want to make sure that we're getting the money that, you know, is agreed to by this agreement.
Treasurer, yes?
Just a little bit of clarity. So on the administrative costs, I was more concerned about the amount of time and effort it takes an entire, one staff member to do all the billing on the pilots, track all the projects, do the collections, follow up on phone calls. I mean, it's almost a full FTE that, full-time equivalent for those who don't know our lingo, that chases down abatement.
Right, but, but this, what I'm proposing is even a larger scope of work, and that's to, you know, for, for this information to be housed in, so Mr. Mann can pull up a report, and is the report at CPS going to be different than the report at the city? So whoever does it, you know, that there is a shared responsibility and that we're not shouldering the cost for, you know, maneuvering around the responsibilities around these abatements regarding billing, approval, whatever.
Any other items that, that you think would be helpful to have as part of that consensus conversation? And I think many of these, I can, I can already hear the whereas before them.
I, I would, I would emphasize the health and safety piece as a major portion of it. That's the resource officers, it's the health department nurses, school-based health centers, and the pedestrian safety. And adding to that too, I think the commitment that they were supposed, yeah, the commitment to, to preschool spaces, shared spaces, if you will. And, and I, I do think that I want to know who the city is reporting to because I know in that property tax work group, the city administration people kept saying, well, we already do. We report to a, a review committee regarding all the abatements. And I'd like to know who that is and where it is because we need to be watching that. So that's just a, maybe that's an assignment if somebody can find that out because they sure couldn't tell us, but they said there was one.
So if I could, so I think we have a hefty list here that are items, but it's a good list of those things that I think are on our hearts and minds that we want to build consensus to, that I think would help make sure that everyone is aligned as our team goes forward to have those conversations with our partners at the city. So if there's nothing else for that list, and I've captured a lot here, maybe we could think through, I think going with the fact that we said we'd love to have, I think we have a, two hats that we'd like to have maybe a resource play. One, to help us get to the point of aligning on that, and maybe some pre-work that would be required to get us ready for that conversation on June the 10th. And then I think there is another piece of work, which is the point forward, being our relationship manager with our partner elected officials to help bring consensus to what then would be a very widely communicated, at least on our part, in a very transparent way, kind of our rules and engagement, things that we believe should be incorporated into the conversation. So I think those are two pieces of work. There's the up until June 10th, and then there's June 10th and beyond for a resource that potentially could support us, you know, obviously at the, the need of the project team from their standpoint, but also from the board-to-board relationship and helping to ensure that everyone has the same bit of communication. Because I will say, there is lots of miscommunication because we don't have that formalized opportunity to connect, and I think we all have the best interest to, oh, when you see somebody on city council, but, you know, I think having that formalized could be very useful. So my question to the board is, you know, if you're thinking about that June 10th meeting, you know, one thing that, you know, I would love to have is a, a benchmarking, and it is, here we've looked at these cities who have gone through a similar process, and here's what we learned, and almost like a one pager from each. Here's the things that are learnings, here are things that they called success factors, and, and that be generated not just from doing maybe research, but even having conversations with people that would be sitting in our seats in some of these other locations. So benchmarking for me, I would love that to be a part of that conversation because at this point, I really don't know what I don't know. And, you know, are there things that are maybe things that we're not thinking about today?
Thank you. I would agree, and in light of what the administration is going through already, preparing for that June 6th meeting on numbers, they will be able to report back at least some of the progress or lack of progress at that meeting. So I think that would be helpful for the 10th, and I would suggest whoever this third resource person is, is that perhaps that person or entity could present on the 10th this, what's happening around the state, rather than ask our administration to do that because they have plenty of other things to do. So it'd be great to, to identify after the meeting whoever the superintendent's thinking about or the board is, identify that third person to be able to, at least around Ohio, this is what is happening with abatements, positive, negative, and what have you, rather than them, because they're going to come back with numbers, plus they've got to come back with hopefully some more hirings and God knows what else to get ready for next year and the strategic plan. So, and I would then say that to your point, and I don't know that you picked it up, it was a great idea, I think one of the other things in that resolution has to be our interest in increasing enrollment. And increase, so I think we've all mentioned that, but I don't know if that came up in the last of your list because what we want to do is that we want to have families coming here, we want to have children moving in, not just, you know, industry stuff, or, which is important, but we want kids. So I think the enrollment piece is that. And if we all, are we going to tell our colleagues to kind of come with ideas as to what we want to be seeing or not? I'm not, I'm not sure what we're telling the folks that aren't here.
Why don't we have the administration put together a draft resolution so we have something to work with of the list that we've compiled so far? And that way, it's just, you know, we have, we will have something on paper, it will be a first reading.
I think that's good.
And we can, you know, engage the other board members who weren't able to make it, get their ideas, and revise that resolution for the next it, get their ideas, and revise that resolution for the next board meeting.
But not submit it to, with one another, because we're not allowed to do that, right? I mean, that's sort of deliberation, submit it to, individually submit ideas to Phyllis who will then submit them to the administration? I mean.
Well, we have, we have the ideas here.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so my, I think that we, so this list, and I'm sure you've each got your list, but maybe we just reconcile that, make sure we all have the same list. But, I mean, I like to keep the ball rolling because we are on a timeline.
Absolutely.
To say, here, we think, there's a lot of alignment already in these, so it gives a chance for us to circle in our new board members. And then whatever we learn from benchmarking, whatever we learn from the report out from the meeting on June 6th, we can utilize all that to formalize our thoughts around that resolution, and then make those changes so that we can then have that before us on the 19th. Mr. Davis?
No.
Well, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, Member Bates. One more thing on the 6-10 meeting, statutory authority, I think, need to have a better understanding of what our statutory authority is and where it comes from.
Sure.
That, that would be helpful.
And my question is, do we need to put out an RFP for the external representative, or is this a small enough contract that we can?
I think it's small enough.
Do you think it is?
I'd rather do that than wait three weeks for an RFP.
Yeah, well, I want to do what's legal. So I just, I'm just checking. So if we can go ahead and, you know, get that rolling without having to put it out and post it and.
Ms. Bolton?
Do you know, or?
So it depends on the, the amount of the contract.
Right, exactly. So that's, that will be assistance on if we're going to make an immediate appointment versus a longer term.
And so generically, it's, we would be able to do that just as up to or something?
Yeah.
That kind of thing?
Yes.
And then it could be expanded?
What is, could you clarify the dollar amount that we could do an up-to agreement with a third party to keep this train moving?
So our policy is for projects that are between 25 and 100, we need three quotes. Anything over 100,000 would be an RFP, a formal RFP. If it's under 25, then you just need a quote.
True, that great idea about making sure to keep it moving, to have the administration work on a draft. I would hope that that draft would be as inclusive as possible because it might be looked back on as, well, that's what they really cared about, rather than what we're adding, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, it's the, the issue of whether or not there should be residential involved as well, that kind of, put almost the whole grocery list there, I think would be helpful.
Well, and one question that I have is, I mean, would we, you know, I, I think we don't know what we need yet. So would we do one agreement perhaps to help us get to June 10th? Because that's a specific body of work that we've just laid out, right, you know, at least some of these things right here. And then I think potentially then, that allows us to say, all right, here's, here's what would, we would need to go beyond that. Here's the next phase, and we would need a resource to help us then, as our formalized relationship manager with our, our partner elected officials, et cetera. Because once we have that resolution, you know, I think for sure that's going to be a part of it. But what are your thoughts on, on making that two different pieces of work?
I, I would assume it would be the same folks that would be doing all of it, but I, I think before, with only four of us here, I think it would make sense to at least just do that first piece. And then that second piece, after we see what our resolution starts to look like and how broad that work will be, then with all seven of us here, say now this is the next part of it. And I'm anxious to hear what our folks report back from that June 6th meeting, big time.
Ms. Bates?
And I would like to see the residential abatements and the growth of the district connected and not separate. I think that would be important.
Yeah, I, thank you for reminding me of that. Something that I've had on my to-do list, and you can look at my electronic notes in my phone, was, pardon me? Well, it would just, go talk to Dusty. Because, you know, I've heard all of these quotes, oh, Dusty said we have this, Dusty said we have this. And I would love this person to, between now and the 10th.
Translate Dusty.
Go, go sit with Dusty, to come back and say, here is the comprehensive look at what residential abatements look like for the city of Cincinnati. Because I feel like I need to have that to be an informed school board member. And knowing that so many of our constituents have asked this question, it was really, it really do have, it says, go talk to Dusty, just to sit down and understand that. Is it truly a billion dollars? And then are they able to pull a report to show where these abatements have gone? And I would love to see, like, we have promote, you know, produced these maps of the city and where the abatements have, I mean, where our students reside, or where they, where our students by school reside. I'd love just to have a, a map with dots for my simple mind, and then maybe an analysis of a level deeper of that current dollar amounts of those abatements and kind of the, the data there. So I see some, some.
It's in process.
Movement.
The auditor did present those kinds of numbers, maybe not our students, but did present the numbers regarding the residential abatement to that tax work group. And it is pretty astounding as to within the city or our district. The other piece of it is, keep in mind, we have other, we have these sorts of agreements with other entities, too. So it's, this is really, really only if dealing with the city, city. It's not dealing with the other 10 or 12 people or entities that we have relationships with.
So I wonder if that's already put together for that tax working group?
Probably.
If we could then have that as, on the agenda for our June 10th meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's a quick, it's a quick presentation. Somebody can translate it, bring it, or you can have the auditor, but the auditor does tend to say things like, well, if people would stop voting for tax levies, this wouldn't be happening. So we may not want him to appear.
Yeah, so maybe we have somebody get that and bring that to us. Okay. Superintendent Mitchell?
Yes, just a couple points of clarification so that we know the direction in which we're going. I think that I heard two different things in terms of a draft resolution on the 10th, but I heard the 19th. So which date is the board expecting a draft resolution?
I think what I heard, and board members, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would have a draft for the 10th.
Okay.
That would be our baseline. And then we can adjust, align, you know, making sure that all of our members have an opportunity to weigh in on it. So there may be some edits, additions, deletions, et cetera. But then we could align on a final resolution on the 10th that could be then formalized the 19th.
And the second point of clarification is the timing in which you want us to bring on an external resource. Is that prior to June 10th, after the conversation takes place with the staff from the city?
Again, I think, just, let me see if I got this right, but I think it would be, for the body of work necessary to do the benchmarking, perhaps the translation of the auditor and those types of things, it would be a, an initial agreement that would help us get to what we need for the 10th, to then align on a resolution that we then vote on the 19th. It's just the extra pair of hands, arms, and brain power that can get, get us what we need for the 10th. And I, I think what we find there, there's going to be a lot of things shared with us, it's going to be enlightening, and I think for our constituents and the people that we are responsible to, I think it will be helpful for them as well.
And that resource will be presenting on the 10th?
Yes.
Right. So I thought that was correct, that's correct.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. And I think what we then, if we're, you know, also talking about the 10th, that I think that we would try to prioritize these items as what we would really want to focus and minimize any other non-essential business, but to really focus our energies to getting that alignment done on the 10th. We would want to have a presentation from the administration on a report out from their June 6th meeting, and have we aligned on numbers and processes and everything that goes into that, and, and kind of aligning on next steps there. Then we would have a presentation from this partner who could talk to us about learnings from across the state and/or other similar districts, lessons learned, best practices, et cetera. Then we would have a conversation on the draft consensus resolution, and based on everything that we had learned up until that point, and, you know, allowing our other board members to kind of have a chance to absorb that, et cetera. We would then have a formalized, now fully aligned upon, resolution that would then go to the board on the 19th for, for final adoption. And kind of within the context of all of this, making sure that we're thinking about our statutory authority. And, you know, there are some things that, that we have authority, and there's other things that's really truly recommendations that will we include, and things that we believe on behalf of our, our stakeholders should be included in the process. Any, any, do I have alignment to that? Disagreement, inclusions that I missed? To the administration, thank you all for your efforts. You know, I think this is definitely a shaping fog moment because, you know, we're trying to pull together something that none of us really had a part of developing in the, the 99 agreement, but we've all felt, heard, and, and seen some of the challenges within that agreement that, that people are looking to us to, to do better, and to be more specific and more accountable and more transparent. So we thank you all for your efforts to, to pull these things together and, and your incredible advice and, and efforts to date. Treasure Wagner?
A question. So I, I do have maps. The map for the TIF projects only shows the TIF outlined, I didn't put the dots on that, so I need to go back to them. I'm wondering, when, at which meeting do you want to review the maps?
Well, I think, I think that's all part of current state on the 10th. But it's not just, you know, the things that we do have jurisdiction on. I mean, I think that's important as far as current state and kind of where things happening. But, you know, I think the other piece was on the auditor side. Again, even though we don't have direct authority for residential property abatements, I think it's important for us to understand how great those are, because I've heard, you know, really large numbers. So for the residential property abatements, you know, what does that nut look like? What does that number look like? And where are they located? You know, where, what's that, that full impact? But then, you know, where do they look like as it relates to our city as a whole?
To that point, I think when people hear the presentation about the residential and what it all is entailed, it might become a larger priority for us, and we may or may not want to pursue it. So I think that's, that's useful. And I, I think one of the things that was good, and it was hard for the public to understand back in the FC piece, is that we had no interest in being the determining factor as to whether or not the FC stadium was there. That's, that is the city's jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction was to worry about if it is going to be there and what have you, how do we make sure our district does not suffer? So nobody here is trying to be on city council to determine whether or not there's economic development or not, that's their purview. But we have to make sure that as they exercise their responsibilities, we do not have our district injured in any way, and indeed, hopefully helped.
And, and our district as well as, and I know you implied this, the families and students that we serve.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I think, you know, that, that's where I feel like this resolution can really say, here's what we believe. Because, you know, a lot of these items that we talked about directly impact the very, the children and their families that we serve. Okay, there was one other thing I was going to say. Yeah, forget, there was one more thing I was going to add there. But, so, thank you all for a healthy discussion. I would like to turn it over for a report from the treasurer.
I'm submitting some amending transportation vendor amendments in order to finish out this fiscal year with, be able to close out those bills. So my report is submitted in your documentation.
Great. Do I have a motion to report, approve the report of the treasurer?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion.
What is the difference between the new payments and the ones they're replacing? How much more are we paying in transportation?
So these are the, in, well, so at the beginning of the year, Transportation Department put through estimated contracts for services and routes that were in place at the time. Throughout the year, things got moved around, so Mr. Johnson is moving money between vendors. Like, originally it was under the first student contract, now it's under Peterman, or it was new services that they just added to the Peterman contract. Those specifics I can't explain to you, but these are the creases to this contract.
So it was like, like three million dollars in increases?
Well, there was money in his budget to cover about half of it, so we had to increase his budget by about five and a half million in order to finish out the year.
Any other discussion? Board Member Bolton?
So this is about this year. It is not about next year. And we feel, as a result of the audit and the hard work that everybody's been doing, that we're starting fresh for this coming year with all things, hopefully all things better, and actually with some savings for next year in the budget, as we heard in finance, and also better, more robust relationships and accountability, and much more efficiencies as we move forward. But, so the long nightmare of transportation hopefully is almost over.
There has been considerable work to optimize the system. There have been some cost savings projected for next school year. We have reduced the original requests that came into us for next school year in terms of the budget. I am not going to say it's going to be flawless, but we are working really hard to make some major improvements.
Thank you.
Need a roll call.
Any other discussion? All right. Treasure Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye. All right, having no other business to come before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned. Have a great day, everyone. Happy Friday.